Call to order and recording of members present and absent.
Helles, absent. Lynn Martin.
Here.
Jane McDermott.
Present.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Tiffany Slater.
Here.
Read open meeting compliance statement.
I am the undersigned clerk of the board of education of the Alpha Independent School District in the Glenwood County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of the county of Oklahoma. I also certify that these 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays and holidays, because of the date, time, place and agenda of this meeting was supposed to be prominent public view at the location of the meeting. Witness in my hand, this first day of August 2016, Joanne Ice, Department of the Department of Education.
Consent agenda, all of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration and approval of the following items. 3A, addition of items of new business to the agenda.
We have none.
None. 3B, minutes of the July 5th, 2016 regular board meeting.
I didn't see any corrections or anything to the board amendments to any board members?
Okay, thought they will stand approved as presented. Approval of the treasures report on the status of funds and investments.
Open investment ledger, you can see the usual investment here for schools in the state it presents us. The other is kind of misleading. Because there's not any numbers in it, because he doesn't even have our estimate of needs yet projected into all of his information.
Last time.
If yours is like mine, it's flipped over. I have a hard time getting into the right areas. But David doesn't have all of our estimate budget in yet, so we got a lot of zeros in that report.
I just need to go back to my agenda.
Approval of the activity fund report?
Again, our activities have a lot of money in them, so we're solid for you to start out programs. Most of the expenditures, if you look at vocal, we just ordered some new uniforms and those types of things for electric gold and they'll be reimbursed in that particular area, so. Or we practice gear and so forth and the different basketball and football, the rest of them pretty much idle at this point in time. Longfella, they helped buy some drinking pounds with their activity. Any questions?
Ms. Parkers, this interest account down here at the very bottom?
Yes.
Explain to me a little bit about what comes in and out of that.
Well, that will be divided into the different activities. And it probably hasn't been divided in the last five years. And Joanne and her mathematical skills will figure out a formula.
Okay, we've just been letting it be all?
Right, and then, so each organization will get a percentage of that on the amount that they have brought in over the last five years too on a percentage basis.
So we don't have to spend it if we don't want to?
Well, that's probably correct, in that area, if we wanted to keep it for a certain area designated.
Well, I mean if, for example, if we needed it for times when times were a little bit tougher, is there a way to let that build?
We have taken money out of that in the past when a certain organization didn't have enough money to do a purchase order for, let's say, the kids going to stay motel or something of that nature, we have done it. I'm not sure since we've been doing this, but we probably would have to make an accountable chart on what we could spend that interest on, because I'm not sure we've identified that, to be real honest with you.
I don't mean spend it, I mean save it.
Yes. We could.
Approval of the activity fund account fundraisers, if any?
Softball, we've got concession, sell us some T-shirts. And any donations for softball comes in there. High school football, expensive for summer pride clothing, et cetera. Band, concession stand, and also spirit apparel. FCCLA, state convention expenses, initially incorporate a bag party in the fall, and they've done this in the past. Gold cards for football. And on that one, it said profits are small, purpose of design more as a keepsake, that is for the programs. FFA, shooting clay tournament to raise monies. Any questions on any of those fundraisers?
3F, approval of booster club sanctioning requests.
And I think you have all of that in your information, and they've met the requirements and so forth of getting those sanctioned. And basically that allows them to operate outside of the school buck. School board can ask at any time to see any of their expenditures for any of that stuff. So they are running within the laws of the state of Oklahoma as a sanctioned organization.
Are these all the sanctioned organizations, or these are in addition to?
No, I think we had vocal, electric gold and speech last month.
Okay, these are just new ones?
New ones that have got all the information that have not been voted on.
I did too, I thought we'd approve some of these.
We approved football in the spring because that was, they were just forming. Now, this is for the, that was for the second of the year from March or April to the end of the year, and this is for the new year.
Do we approve the sanctioning of every booster club, every year?
Every sanctioned booster club.
Questions? Approval to declare items as surplus property.
Have a lot of textbooks and things of that nature that we're not going to be using, and we can't even give these away to any organization without declaring surplus. And then we have a lot of old desktop PCs that are non-functional, those types of things that Mark has given us to declare surplus. And there's some outlets that will come by and buy those, so we'll try to get those so that we're not storing them for 10 years and collecting dust somewhere.
3H, approval of the physical year 16 function changes.
And again, this is just taking money from the budget and transferring to different functions so that we could balance, and there'll be some more because we're still working off of the estimate of needs at this point in time. But at first, I know Terry put a lot of the money into the teacher salaries, which was 1,000, and so she had to go back and put these numbers in to make sure that we balance in these other areas. No new monies, no less monies, it's just moving money within our budget to make everything balanced.
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I like that motion.
Second.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Hello, yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Vote to approve or not to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for physical year 17. 4A, general fund, number 11. PO number 096 to 273 totaling 255,515.98 with change orders number 1 through 273, Inc. and payroll, purchase order number 50161 through 50172 totaling 159,519.38 with change orders, number 50,000 through 50,172, Inc. for a year-to-date total of 8,529,887.15.
A lot of big items on this year, I don't know if you have any questions whatsoever, but Washington will remodel the boys' bathroom from Vinetti Plumbing and that's purchase order 105. Textbooks for Washington, 110, $8,000. District special ed curriculum, $7,700. Supplies for Lincoln School, 5,200, purchase order 151. 150, Apple Incorporated District iPads for Lincoln. Verco Middle School Classroom Furniture. Basically added another class room, so we had to get some furniture for that one. Spanish books, $3,700, 169. Zeller floor covering, actually put some tile down in those entryways at the auditorium on the south and north, and also down in the choir room, and looks really nice. Joe Rollins hardware floor to refinish the gym floors at the high school, 17,000. New air conditioning unit at Longfella, 5,500. Edge Annuity is our computer software that we do credit recovery, we do alternative ed, even tutoring at the middle school. 202, American Fidelity Administrative Services, that's to help us with all the healthcare changes and the Obamacare, and that is an administrative nightmare, to be real honest with you. Wells Fargo, we are going to lease one of those 15 passenger buses so that we do not have to have a Oklahoma bus driver's license, anybody can drive that so that we can take that one bus rather than two Suburbans like with the cheerleaders or small groups and those types of things that'll be out of Hutchinson, and that's a one-year lease, renewable up to three years on that. Time Clock Plus Software Training, purchase order 210, that is our time clock for all of our non-certified, also has to do with our leaf forms and those types of things. Part of negotiations, we're wanting all certified teachers to clock in and out with this also. You know, if you remember, we do about $120,000 worth of substitutes each year, and the paperwork is absolutely crazy, and we think this will help. And we're also, what would you call it, Pam Guinea pigs for their software, we're going to be able to put the substitute teachers on this list also. So we won't have to make two or three different paper traces on a substitute, and it will keep the better track. It will work if our administrators make the teachers do it, and we check on it every day. I've been checking in and out all year long with it, and it's not bad. You come in, sit at a computer, and you type in the number, and you type in "I'm in", and you leave it, and then when you're ready to leave, you do the same thing. If you forget it and you check in in the morning, it will tell you you forgot your checkout, and you can do it at that point in time. So we think this would be a good thing, but everybody's going to have to be involved with it.
Is this just the training, or is this the software itself?
This is just the training, it's expensive. They're coming here to visit with all administrators and all secretaries, they're going to visit with Pam as the manager of this program, probably a day and a half, and just with the teachers or with the administrators and secretaries, three hours. So, yeah, it's expensive. Any other questions maybe on that?
I think we've got another air conditioning unit too.
Yes. Now, Terry's done a great job putting these in and what we're buying them for and so forth, and what we're spending it on.
What's this computer software, 6,236.29?
What purchase order?
Excuse me, 260.
260? That is the new textbooks for the typing classes, or computer classes and so forth. Those are new textbooks adopted this year, they will be good for six years, and the high school and middle school bought the same publisher and so forth, so there will be that seamless transition. And part of the new rules that we have for graduation, our students are going to have to have one computer class above keyboard. So this is software, and it's also, because in the old times, we had opposite of Apple, so we're teaching the Apple because the kids have the Apple. So that's all new textbooks. Any other questions on the general?
We've got a lot of new textbook purchases, what percentage of that would you say is electronic or software oriented versus the hard paperback?
Well, they still haven't got that completely worked out. These are all hardbacks, but the kids will have a disk that they can take and put on their computer, or iPad, or whatever. They haven't made that true transition yet. You know, we're still looking at in the future only buying maybe a class of 20 textbooks, and then have the disk that go in those computers, but not all of our kids have it. Not all of them can take them home yet, and those types of things. So we still had to go with the hardback textbooks in that particular area. They haven't really gone, and you have to pay quite a bit more for that true electronic textbook than what we're going to at this point in time.
Are our students effectively using the computers and iPads that we've purchased?
I think they are at the high school, I think that's one of the reasons that we went to, we're going to do our basic computer class, and we're going to teach our kids how to use those Macs. Some of those kids struggle when they come to us because they're used to the PC version, and there's learning curve with a Mac versus a PC, and so we're going to teach them Google Docs and some of those kinds of things where they can, we give them an email address when they hit there, they have to log in and do those kinds of things, and I wasn't convinced that they were totally using to the best of their capability, and so I felt like we needed to have class, we needed to teach them how to use it. And we're going to do that opposite of Oklahoma history, so every freshman's going to do it, and so they'll be able to use that for the four years that they're there to do that. As far as the electronic things that we do, that we looked at just ordering electronic, and it was like, I want to say it was like $70 to order the electronic version, and you could get the book and the electronic, because when you ordered the book, you automatically got the electronic version, and the book was like $81. There was like $11 difference, and we thought for that little amount of money, it was worth to go ahead and get a book in case kids don't have wireless connectivity at home and those kinds of things, because there's still a lot of kids that don't, so we looked at those. They can do that, but it's always convenient, so, or when they get on the bus and do those kinds of things, they can take that book and look at it and do that. But it's, I wasn't totally convinced that we were using it to their capability, but I would like to work that direction, and that's one of the reasons that we bought that computer stuff, to try and get them hooked, so.
That's good.
And went to middle school, not being able to take them home, they're just working within the classroom and learning those skills and so forth.
And you mentioned not every child has one? Doesn't every child have one?
Not every child has access to-
Oh, gotcha, to the internet.
To the internet at home.
Ah, that's very true. More than you'd think.
It's surprising.
It is, isn't it?
Because you would think everybody has access, and I would venture to say 60% might.
Right.
So there's 40% of our kids may have to go somewhere else in order to do that.
That's absolutely right.
And we fight some battles with parents sometimes, and they go, "I want my kid to have a textbook", and we thought for $11 difference, it wasn't worth that.
Okay, 4B, building fund, number 21, PO number 15 through 21 totaling 25,145 with change orders number 1 through 21, for year-to-date total of $87,305.
Purchase order 15, Cool Form Phone, excuse me, we went ahead and insulated that softball dugout for the ladybugs, and then Dodd Electric, which is purchase order 17, we could not find anybody who would volunteer to put those softball lights up, OG&E or Alf Al Electric, and all the electric companies in the oil business were gone, so we finally hired Dodd Electric through the recommendation of Alf Al Electric to install, and they installed them for 5,000. And then Northwest Electric, that's including some new light fixtures and some new light bulbs, and all the wiring that it took to hook those lights up to go underground. And then Boyer &amp; Sons 20 is an open purchase order for district roof repair, and then we have Brandon Comfort Solutions for some kitchen repairs.
Ms. Parkers, do we have the capabilities of saying, going in and saying, "This is how many dollars we spent on the softball field, and this is how many new air conditioners we've purchased in the last five years"? I mean, do we have the capability?
It would take us a while, but I think we could do that.
You know, because we projected what we thought we would budget for the new softball field, how close are we to that? And what, you know, I think it'd be interesting to see what we have, especially, I think, about air conditioners, what have we put in to that and?
I think on the softball, Jane, that we projected how much it would cost what we did, we didn't have any protection on lights or anything else, because we really didn't know what we were going to do with that.
Well, I know, but then we got some grant, but we put, wouldn't it be safe to say we've put a significant amount more money in the softball field than we originally thought?
I don't know that we have.
Okay. Not that that's good or bad, but would it be good to know?
Well, I can tell you, 1695 and phone was not ever thought about until baseball did it to their dugout and found out how nice it was, because this helps keep the dirt and everything else out of it, and keeps it cool, and kids are utilizing those dressing rooms more than we ever thought.
Yeah.
Because I thought it was just going to be, you know, you come to the ballgame, you put your stuff there, but they're actually utilizing that as more of the dressing room area than we ever anticipated, I anticipated. And I thought we could get OG&E to put lights up, but boy, they changed. They're not doing any freebies anymore, they used to do a lot of freebies.
They don't have a crew here anymore.
Well, they're not doing it throughout state, see, they told us that Woodward's crew would do it if they were in town, but they couldn't guarantee that maybe one a day because of their timeframe. So, but yeah, we could do that.
I think it'd be interesting.
Okay.
4C, child nutrition, fund number 22 plus PO number 19 totaling 195 with change orders-
Last year we went to being able to pay for lunches through a credit card and everything, and that is our annual fee that we have to pay now.
Year-to-date total of 191,678. Okay, 4D, gift fund, number 81, purchase order number 7 through 8 totaling 2,000 with change orders number 1 through number 78 for a year-to-date total of 143,875.
Those are SureTrust scholarships going this month to Northwest and the Western Oklahoma State University Scholarships.
We entertain a motion for four, please.
I'm going to approve the purchase order encumbrances as referenced in 4A, 4B, 4C and 4D.
I second that.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
I have voluntary separation for Kim Bowling, who was hired as a parent at the middle school, and also Megan Collins as the assistant softball coach at the middle school. She's having some medical issues, and she's got doctor's appointments all that point in time, so assistant coach at the high school, excuse me, and we will take care of that later on in the meeting to get them in. Have no reassignments. I wanted to remind you all that the Oklahoma School Board Fall Conference is August 25th, 26th, 27th, and we have reservations at the Holiday Express 101 East Main, and if you need a telephone number, it's 1-405-778-A100. And I believe this is a new hotel, which is just on the north side of Durt Town, about three blocks from the Cox Convention. Don't have any more legislative updates. I will tell you that last week, all of us went to, what's the right term, Engage at Woodward, and I actually went into a law update and scared the bejesus out of me on the number of teachers in the state of Oklahoma that- on the number of teachers in the state of Oklahoma that have brought up on different type of criminal charges because of the use of the cellphone, of texting, of being on Facebook and so forth. So far, they have suspended nine teachers' licenses because of what they're finding on textbook, texting, and Facebook and so forth. Pretty, pretty scary.
Did you happen to see that email from Sean Heine on the reasons to support the state question for the sales tax? It was very good.
Yes, I did.
It broke down how it was to be used and all of the reasons, all the things that it couldn't be done and how it was going to be monitored. And I thought it was very good. I don't know whether he was encouraging us as school board people to look at taking a stand in, you know, in support of education, straight five thousand dollar teacher raise. It was a really, really good explanation. And you guys get those?
We do.
It was very good, I thought. As it cannot replace existing monies. There were some real good things in there, though, I thought were very good selling points if you were, if you happened to be thinking about whether you wanted to vote for it or not. So, I thought it was very good, as well as a good one on Hoffmeister saying that the standards have gone up, but the testing will go down. And it was a good one. As to requirements are gonna be a little heavier, is that true? I mean, I couldn't tell much about it.
I think so. You know, you're gonna be voting on the handbooks and everything. I know that we're gonna have to go back and revise some of the high school handbook on graduation requirements and some of that revision that's just now coming out. And what do we have until February to get all that done?
We have to do it before we give a diploma.
Okay. Before May, before they have a diploma, we'll have to research all that, make sure that we got our ducks in the row because they're not sure on everything yet.
Lynn, if I gave you a copy of that, OSS- Did you? You know, it might be something good to get to the public. That was very well written. Yeah, I read it a little bit. Me too. I was like, I printed it actually. So, anyway.
Okay, I don't have anything on strategic planning, just a couple of things on communication. Vocal instructor at the college, Mitch Longhurst, wrote the board thank you note for allowing the college to come to the Bus Barn for that spring concert. He just booed and hollered about how good of a place it was and how nice. And maybe would like to do it again in the spring. So, it was a thank you note from him. Also, Dr. Bo Hannaford called me. Northwestern is applying for a grant to renovate their tennis courts. And part of the grant is to reach out to the community and so forth. So, as superintendent, I did write a letter of approval of it because of the need for tennis courts, especially since the tennis courts at the high school are no longer there. But it's a federal grant and it's probably needed up there at Northwestern. So, if you have any questions, anybody, call Dr. Bo Hannaford, he has all the answers. And that's all I have.
Okay. We don't need to approve that, correct?
No, that's just a communications. So, we're items of current business, six A.
Right.
Discussion of possible board action on the Alba High School, Alba Middle School, and Alba Elementary Schools through handbooks.
Okay, are we gonna look at those five F communications? Policy changes, additional-
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have that. I'm sorry.
Okay, guess what I was-
Okay, these are the new policies that have been sent out by the Oklahoma School Board Association. They're for you to look at for this month and we'll vote on next month. And they've got things that they've changed, crossed out, and so forth. The second set of additional policy changes, they're actually from Bo Rainey, our attorney, and that's from the Oklahoma, no, the Office of Civil Rights on what we need to have in compliance. And that goes clear back to that suspension of that student and that civil rights coming to our school and so forth. So, that racial, racial harassment and needs to be in that, in our policy, so we'll have to look at that. But those are for you to look at for the month, and then we will come back and vote on those, accept those or not. And again, they're from the Oklahoma School Board Association due to legislative changes that we subscribe to each year and from Bo Rainey on the Office of Civil Rights requirements. Okay?
Discussion with possible board action, this is six A, vote to approve or not to approve the Alba High School, Alba Middle School, and Alba Elementary School student handbooks for fiscal year seventeen as listed.
Those were presented to you all last month for you to look at and ask the principals to make anything corrections in red. Did you all have any questions over the student handbooks?
I like the format of things in red. I like the format of the things in red at the beginning. I think Mr. Luttery did that, which was very user-friendly. So, that was, I appreciate that. They're very, very good.
And then knowing that if you approve that, that the Alba High School will have to be brought back to change a little bit because of some new rulings. I would recommend to the board, unless there's any problem that you saw, that you would approve the handbooks that are presented.
We entertain a motion?
Is it for six A?
Yeah, it's for all three handbooks.
I make a motion we approve six A.
Second?
Martin?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes. Discussion, discussion with possible board action to vote to approve or not to approve the employment of the following non-certified personnel for fiscal year seventeen.
Cherry Penell would be an Alba Middle School parent. Clayton Walker would be a full-time bus driver and a three-hour custodian. Karen Thomas would be a cook at Lincoln for four hours. Cindy Howardton, I believe is how you pronounce that, and that's a Washington parent. Ty Pierce, a Washington parent. Lisa Vermillion, middle school parent. Mary Tyree, middle school parent. Emily Schrum, middle school parent. Emily Schaefer, middle school parent. Mary Scolar would be cheer sponsor at the middle school. And Shelby Anderson would be a lay assistant softball coach for the high school to replace Kanan Collins. And that's all she would be doing.
Mariah Ratley?
And Mariah Ratley, did I miss one?
Mm-hmm.
Middle school parent.
Bryce Lewis?
Oh, I'm getting there. Bryce Lewis is going to be our student director for vocal. She is a senior at Northwestern. She will be in charge of our vocal program. And Mrs. Mitchell is going to be helping with that program also. And Jewel Connor will help as an accomplice, but we can't hire her until the September board meeting due to the retirement regulations on her. So, Carla's gonna help throughout the year, Jewel's gonna help. And very fortunate to have Bryce, she can, very highly recommended. Originally from-
El Reno.
El Reno, I thought that. And this is Bryce over here, so if you have any questions, I told her that could be on the hot seat tonight. But, but background, her capabilities and everything, highly recommend. Hopefully, through this process and with this new legislative bill that came out, we're going to be able to pay a little bit of extra duty contract for Bryce the days that she's not at Northwestern in her student teaching or classes, and we could pay her as a substitute teacher. The only drawback in this whole program is that she still is required to take four weeks of school and she can't get out of that, and we've been working on that to have everything cut. But she will be at a semester and then when she passes everything, then we will hire her second semester to finish out the year. Any questions for Bryce? She's already ordered music. She's been visiting with Ramona Cummings, been asking her all the questions, been working up for her classroom. She's been working with the choreographer, getting him the information that he needs and so forth. So, I think she's ready to go. Very happy to have her.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't be afraid to ask for help.
Yeah, I have been. I've been, Mr. Parker's down on his nerves a little bit, but-
Well, that's good for him.
He's passing along to us.
So, I would recommend to the board that we hire the personnel presented.
I make a motion we approve the employment of these thirteen people for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen.
Second? Slater?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Discussion of possible board action to vote to approve or not to approve offer of employment on a one-year temporary contract for fiscal year seventeen for Chelsea Thomas certified personnel.
Chesley came in last spring and worked, and worked for, as a tutor for our students that were on the failure list and so forth. Had great success with those kinds of students. Kinda wanted to know what we could do with her this year. And Mr. Potter and I sat down, we kinda visited that. We need to have a journalism class so that they can be able to write a newspaper, get communications out to the people, and also maybe a little webpage direction. So, Chesley's gonna teach at least one hour of that. And then she will be the number one substitute for the high school. So, any teacher that's gone, she will substitute in that particular capacity each and every time it comes open. And then those students that are failing and everything will report to her wherever she is so that she can work with them one-on-one. So, we're gonna try to keep her busy and try to utilize her expertise and see if this won't help our failing list and get some of these kids off of it and get them graduated also.
Didn't we, we hire her back in March?
Only, only as, only as a substitute teacher, but I don't think we hired her in March.
Or she started, started helping us in March?
Yes, yes.
And at that time, didn't we talk about we were gonna get some statistics together to see?
Okay.
To see the-
I've got some.
Okay.
I've got some. The number of kids that she helped and what the grades were.
And what our progress was if we moved them from failing to not failing.
Okay.
We're gonna try to do maybe the same type of situation down in the, more the middle school area?
Gonna look at some people, yes, some of it.
Yeah, because a, a permanent sub is valuable. It saves us money, I think, there. I think that area, we talked about too.
We entertain a motion for six C?
I make a motion that we approve item six C.
Right here, second?
Second?
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Discussion with possible board action to vote to approve or not to approve the offer of employment for the following bus drivers for fiscal year seventeen.
The four presented are bus drivers that we had last year. We just haven't hired for this fiscal year, so I would make the recommendation to the board that we hire Steven Dale, Jeff, so Scott Ball, Charlie Miller for FY seventeen.
So moved.
I second.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Discussion with possible board action to vote to approve or not to approve the revisions to the extra duty salary schedule for fiscal year seventeen, item number six E.
It didn't come out on mine, like, apparently, I'm looking. But apparently, we left off the sixth grade head coaching boys and girls from a year ago, so we need to make sure that we add that and approve that, and that ranges from a thousand dollars to three thousand.
It's out here.
But we didn't have it until then.
Okay.
Okay? So, that's the only change that we actually have on this at this point in time, is that that has been left off until now. So, I'd recommend to the board that we approve the sixth grade head coach, boys and girls. Pass it on.
Make a motion that we approve six T.
Were these all the amounts with the factors, or is this just the base schedule?
That.
Yes.
That's just the base schedule.
Okay. So, hail motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Second?
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right. Six F, discussion with possible board action to vote to approve or not to approve the revisions to the extra duty assignments for fiscal year seventeen. Okay, I got ahead of myself there, didn't I?
And mine didn't come off to the team out in the spreadsheet again?
Yes.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The new one would be Mary Scolar for cheerleading sponsor at the middle school. Also, J.C. Heaton- Also, J.C. Heaton for student council. And then we had a couple of errors in mathematical that we fixed, and they should all be fixed at this point in time. Was there another new one?
Let me read the new ones. It's Shelby Anderson.
Shelby Anderson, assistant softball coach at the high school.
Uh, we have Cara Brock, band director.
We had to adjust her because we made an error in her calculations.
We have Bryce Lewis.
Bryce Lewis would be halftime vocal student director.
We have Pete Phillips, a, a change in the head basketball coach at middle school.
We had a mathematical mistake in his salary.
Okay. We have Mary Scolar.
Okay.
Cheerleading sponsor for the middle school and some money for summer camps.
Right.
And that's all that we have highlighted.
How can you read it on yours like you can mine?
Cause I'm special.
Oh, okay. Can you read it?
Mm-hmm.
Unless I don't know how to do it.
Entertain a motion for six F?
I make a motion that, uh, we approve six F.
Second?
Motion by Larry and second by Linda.
Slater?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Discuss, six G, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the statement of work for the Affordable Care Act Employee Tracking and Employer Reporting Service with American Fidelity, Fidelity Administrative Services, LLC.
And again, this is our contract with American Fidelity to make sure that we're in compliance basically with the Obama Act and making sure that all that information gets there, and it's pretty intense work, and so I would recommend to the board that we continue this contract for FY seventeen.
It's our second year with them, isn't it?
Yes. About the middle of last year is that when we did it? We didn't start out with them because we didn't know for sure what was going on.
Right here, motion?
So moved. Second?
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Six H, consideration and action to approve Brooke Meyer as an adjunct instructor for one hour of anatomy and physiology for the fiscal year seventeen.
Brooke teaches out at Career Tech and as an adjunct teacher she can, and each year we just have to approve that, and she does a pretty good job out there. So, I would make that motion to, to approve.
She just won a big award.
Yeah.
Right here, motion?
I make a motion, we approve, uh, six H.
Second?
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Six I, discussion with possible board action to accept credits from Northwest Technology Center for students attending Career Tech classes and earning credits in mathematics and or English and or science for fiscal year seventeen.
For the past several years, uh, Career Tech has been able to help us with some of our students that could not get these into a regular schedule and also, uh, get a full-time schedule at Career Tech. And it helps our students, and I would make the recommendation to the board that they approve that, this motion.
Entertain a motion?
So moved six I.
Second?
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Six J, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the contract for secondary career and technology education programs with the Oklahoma Department of Career and Technology Education for FY seventeen.
This is our contract for our students to be able to participate in Career Tech, and, uh, of course, it's a great program, so I would recommend to the board that we continue this program with Career Tech.
I make a motion, we approve six J.
Second?
Slater?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Six K, discussion with possible board action to vote to approve or not approve a client service agreement with Bo Covision for interactive remote teletherapy psychologist services, service.
We do not have the capability to do psychological tests on all of our students, especially those students that are coming with autism and some other areas that we can't test. Misty Beiswenger is our psychologist who does most of our testing for us, but she is not licensed to do that. And we, uh, Sherri Lovelace, we're very hard to find a company that would, um, make sure that we're in compliance with FERPA and with IDEA and all of those federal programs so that we could get this taken care of. It will cost us ninety dollars and, what, sixty-five cents an hour for the actual work that they do. Part of the contract that you see marked out and so forth, they're gonna be sending us a new contract, but we did not want all those details in there, and they agreed to change those. So, we feel very confident that this company will be able to work with us and will keep us in compliance with IDEA, FERPA, 504, all of those federal programs that we must do to enhance our students' educational process. So, I would recommend to the board that we are in contract with them. At the most, it's gonna cost us five thousand, but I doubt it's gonna cost us, but maybe around twenty-five hundred dollars.
So moved six K.
Second?
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Six L, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve bids for bread and related products for the child nutrition program for fiscal year seventeen.
Um, had one bid. And, uh, we had a bid opening at twelve o'clock last Friday. Opened up, they met all of the requirements, and again, it's from Bimbo out of Texas. And the only bid that we had, and hamburger buns, two ninety-nine, hot dogs, three twenty-nine, half-pound sandwich bread, twenty-two slices, two twenty-nine. Very comparable to what we had last year, so make the recommendation to the board that we accept this, uh, bid from, let me see if I can get the right name, Bimbo Bakeries USA.
I make a motion, we accept Bimbo USA.
There you go. What a strange name.
Second?
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Six N, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve bids for milk and related products for the child nutrition program for fiscal year seventeen.
Got one bid from Highland, and they met all the requirements, affidavits, and so forth. Uh, half-pound chocolate skim milk is gonna cost point three five one five. Uh, one for syrup milk, three three six six, plain strawberry, three five one five. Gouda butter milk, two point five four one seven, four-ounce orange juice, point one nine seven five. Apple juice, point one nine two five, five-pound sour cream, eleven, five-pounds cottage cheese, eleven, twenty-four-ounce plain low-fat yogurt, two point one nine. And this is a firm bid, this is not an escalating bid, and so they have met that. So, one bid I would recommend to the board, Highland Dairy Products.
So moved.
Second?
Slater?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Six N, proposed executive session to discuss the following items per twenty-five O.S. section three oh seven B one. Six N one, A, AEA win-win negotiations. For a vote.
I make that motion.
Motion, Larry?
Second?
Slater?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.